Is that the baseball fields at Bishop Park?
Hi, there's no Rob, there's no...
I will say for the audio that this is the Tuesday, September tenth, two thousand thirteen special city council meeting. We will start with an invocation. Alderman, Tamler, or Ravel.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you Lord for your many blessings and we ask you to be with us tonight as we make decisions that impact the citizens of this community. That we will do things with the right attitude, for the right reason, and then you will guide our decisions. Do us our daily lives and help us to be examples to others in Christ's name, amen.
Oh, may talk to ladies in the place.
I do wish to testify, United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to open up the workshop where council will discuss public development regarding parks and street improvements. Ryan, Chris.
Okay, uh, just kind of give you a rundown of what we need to do this evening. I got Ryan here. First of all, we, one of the things when we actually go into our executive, or when we go into the council meeting is Heather, under statute, can open the meeting, announce a forum when we have the meeting. Under our resolution of state law, somebody needs to make a motion to elect a pro temp to lead it. I would recommend Heather discuss this with Brian, and the part of the reason being is, is because whoever's pro temp doesn't get to vote unless it's a tie. And that way it can be, y'all, in y'all's roles of being able to vote on issues. That's up to you, it's however y'all want to do it, that's y'all's business, that's just our recommendation. Then you can get into the business of the actual meeting, which is the bond issues. One of the key things that we need to achieve tonight, I believe Ryan agreed with this, is select whichever bonding agent we want to use, whether it's Stevens or Cruz and Associates. Because that's going to establish the numbers that we put in for the ordinance purposes. Um, and then we can go from there. Those are some of the procedural matters we need to address, and we're here to take any questions and try to work through some of this stuff before we get to the formal lead.
Do we, uh, do we need to elect a bond, uh, a bond council, what'd you call it?
The bonding company, whether it's Cruz and...
Do we need to do that for the fire issue? Or just for this thing that we might vote on?
I don't, I thought we had kicked through the fire. I'll just beat that a little bit. I know that the city at the time that we put the fire ballot on, on, a fire issue on the ballot, there was some discussion about what type of financing to utilize. Uh, there was a discussion that you might go with a local bank perhaps, uh, a bank had presented some options to the city as well, and this, that type of bond issue was one that that bank could actually underwrite and help you with that financing. And so, when we did the fire, I think the fires still working through whether, you know, use a local bank or to do a public bond issue, like you'd be proposing for this bond issue and using a public underwriter, uh, like Stevens or Cruz. So, I don't think it's as important on, on the fire issue because we knew the maximum principal amount, uh, based on what your project was, whereas here, because of the refunding component, uh, we need some numbers from a, from an underwriter. So, I hope that addressed your, your question.
In other words, no.
Well, in one, we're under a special council meeting, so we couldn't add that in. It's not only agenda.
We're in a workshop now.
I understand, but I'm saying to do it.
Well, I've been wondering about that for a while, I thought I asked you since we're in a workshop.
Yeah, and actually, I'd forgotten about the, uh, because we have a definite amount of the bond on it, I'd forgotten about, that was the issue, because we could do the local bank or the public. We have any questions or anything on the, what we're here for, on the rewrite of it with the, the bond issue, is these discussions we want to have?
Basically, I'll be honest, as an alderman, um, I'd like for us to do our due diligence and ask the associations to come up and give them an opportunity to speak first, and then after that, um, if there's anyone here that wants to speak to the Boone Road issue, uh, in addition to what's already been said with the hearings and, and the other issues and the face contact that all the aldermen have had with the constituents, that's kind of what I would personally like to see, I don't want that to risk the council, but as far as, uh, under the workshop, that's what I like to see.
That's what the workshop's for.
We have a public comments section in the meeting as well, too.
Uh, that's what, I mean, it's, that's what workshop's for.
As things come up, then we can ask the questions, if things come up.
Okay.
I think, I think the thing that we had to decide in this workshop is we need to see some numbers, we need to know what we're talking about, because as you brought up the last week, we don't want to just ask people to vote something and them not know what it is. So, we have some idea, not a real good one, I don't think, at this point, of what the Boone Road project is, will cost, because we don't know what it is. Now, we're talking about parks, so I'm going to assume that parks is, is here, you know, whether they have figures enough tonight that we can, that are fairly concrete, is one thing, that's what, that's what this workshop's for. This is not, in my opinion, this is not the end game, this is, let's find out where we are and start tweaking what we need to tweak.
Okay.
Also, Garber is here to give us some, a thanks on some rendition for Boone Road with Garber Engineering.
And I'd, I'd like to go ahead and start if it's okay, and ask that Mr. Green, since you wrote a letter on behalf of all the associations, come up and discuss first, if that's okay with council.
Thank you, council members. Uh, it's, it's our, y'all, I'd like to read that, the letter that we wrote into the record. Uh, this was on September fourth, uh, to the Bryant City Council. Uh, twelve representatives from the following associations, Bishop Park, there are two persons and boys, Bryant Boys and Girls Club, two from senior citizens, one person from soccer, four from softball, and number three from the Bryant Athletic Association, baseball and football. Uh, based on the concept below, we voted twelve oh to request that at least three members of Bryant City Council request a special council meeting on September tenth, two thousand thirteen, in order to vote on allowing a resolution and certain ordinances to be placed on the November twelfth, two thousand thirteen ballot. We unanimously agreed to recommend to our various board of directors that our membership support and work for the passage of an ordinance slash ordinances, authorizing the issuance of a park slash street bond that will generate approximately fifteen million dollars in net proceeds after paying off the existing park bond. The proceeds from the fifteen million dollars would be allocated in the approximate amount of nine million dollars to Boone Road slash Sleepy Village Road slash Bishop Park connection, and in the approximate amount of six million dollars to Bishop Park slash Midland Park. In regards to the street, street project, we would support, uh, the process whereby the council would approve the final design and disbursements. In regards to the park project, we would support the process whereby various associations would present a prioritized list of needs to the park committee for their review and recommendation to the council for council's final approval. In regards to the one A, since sales tax, as identified in ordinance two thousand and six dash fifteen, we would support section one A, continuing to read, to acquire, construct, improve, expand, equip, furnish, operate, and maintain newer existing parks and recreational facilities, including parking, landscaping, signage, drainage, lighting, concession, road and utility improvements related thereto. We would support amending section one B to read, to pay and secure the repayment of park and recreational bonds and for repayment of street bond issued under ordinance two thousand thirteen, whatever that might be. We would request and, and recommend that our boards issue a letter to be presented to the Bryant City Council at the call's special meeting agreeing to support and work for the passage of said res- resolution and ordinances after, after their review of the final draft prepared by Friday Alderman Clark, um, for the record. And I'd be open for any questions, or get all the background you want.
Steve, do y'all have, um, kind of a criteria of what items that are still outstanding, that, that haven't been done yet, and the amounts on those?
Well, uh, not necessarily that way, what we were asked to do, or what we thought best, we present a prioritized list of what our needs are. Some of those were from not being completed, some of them are for now, still a work in progress. I can tell you that the baseball, uh, which we can pass that out, it came in at around two million, seven thousand dollars. Uh, soccer, or softball's around, uh, looks like about nine fifty, as I understand from Boys and Girls Club, it's for less than four hundred thousand. Don't have the soccer number yet. Uh, the, uh, senior citizens, depending on what the parking would cost, uh, they didn't have a whole lot. Uh, it was probably, oh, fifteen thousand for small man doors, help the handicap, forty-five hundred worth of ceiling fans, and then there was some parking lighting, things like lighting at the back of the building. So, those numbers were still a work in progress. Uh, I do feel like, obviously, the six million dollars that was talked, and, and that was Ryan that, by the way, is, is, uh, if I might, let me back up just a little bit and, and fill in here. We, as baseball, I'm speaking on behalf of baseball right now, it's been an ongoing thing with us for two or three years, and working with the administration and the Parks Department, uh, saying we needed this, needed that. As far as I know, uh, there might have been something spent out there on some kind of improvement, basically, it's come from us. We spent over fifty thousand dollars, maybe seventy-five, including five thousand, when it first opened on the concession stand, the electrical wasn't working, well, we had to fix that, we've done some other things. Uh, but, uh, uh, when we, we'd, like I said, we've been talking for two or three years, and then I was contacted by the administration back in June, wanting to know that if we would be willing to possibly support a park and street bond issue. And I said, well, my personal opinion on it is, it depends on what streets you're talking about, like, you know, obviously, the park, and I've contended for the last two or three years, we were at this program, you're not going to get the park fixed at ten thousand here and ten thousand there, you're talking about a lot of money, I, I figured three or four million dollars is off the top of my head. But, uh, anyways, uh, we were instructed to get a list together at that time for what we might need, and, uh, we started that process. It happened to be at a time, June, July, around in there, where we had a lot of people out, uh, playing regional tournaments, state tournaments, World Series, thank goodness, we had two in that. Uh, but anyways, they were out, so it was kind of hard for us to get it together. Well, the next thing we knew, I guess they were having some public hearings, and, and we were told that, or I was told that, uh, at this, the third public hearing, I guess it was, that the conversation was all about the street, that's all we went to, I guess, I didn't go. Streets didn't have anything to do with parks. And, uh, so, we decided, well, let's wait till the ordinance comes out and see what it looks like, and we got a copy of it about a week before the meeting, and sure enough, it had no mention of parks in there, just a streets project. Uh, it was at that point that we wrote a letter to all the council members, sent to Mayor One, telling, after our board got together and we talked, that we, we could not support that. Uh, we felt like that it was important that we give you a heads up on that before the vote, that we could go Thursday, so that you know, knew what our position would be if you elected to go ahead and let that go to the ballot, that we would not be supporting it. And, uh, a- as you know, that was turned down, we could go Thursday, well, at that time, from kind of the conversations I had with several of the council members, and from listening to the meeting that night, there appeared to me to be a pretty good sentiment from a number of the council members that we need to finish this part off, before we jump off into some other stuff, and, uh...
Mr. Green, let me interrupt you, sure, when you said that you were talking to the administration, was that what the mayor asked?
Yes. Uh, but we, uh, uh... But anyways, uh, so, uh, some of the council members asked us if maybe we could put something together to at least look at it, and so it was that time that we went back and our board talked about it, and we said, yes, we're certainly with a sentiment of, seems to be, uh, the council wanting to do something. Uh, let's see what we can do, it's pretty short ordered, because we all had it about a week, but, uh, we contacted Boys, Girls Club, Senior Citizens, Soccer and Softball, and, uh, set a meeting for Bishop, which we took place here the other day, and, uh, laid everything out, and, uh, that's how we formulated this letter to you folks for tonight, for you to consider putting it on the ballot. I can tell you that roughly off, and this was off the top of my head, but these organizations represent about three thousand participants. Now, all of those, you know, they have mothers, and they have fathers, and they have grandparents, and, uh, all of them don't live in the city. I know, I was a long time resident of Bryant, I was president, live in Hot Springs, I still have family in Parkville, but, uh, gee, all those folks don't live in the city, so they wouldn't all be voters, but they certainly participate in the city, and they know a lot of people in the city, and that's pretty broad-based grassroots support. And, uh, so we decided to, to, uh, present this to the council, and, and that, and ask you to allow it to go to the ballot, uh, and then, uh, in sixty, in the sixty day period, we'll be working for the passage of it. I would like to say one other thing, uh, give you a little bit more of the picture, the precedent that was set back in two thousand and six, uh, we had a fire initiative, and we had a parks initiative, but the way, that, that election was, uh, in July of 'oh six, if I remember right, and it was in like February or March that a number of the organizations had got together, and we presented a letter to the council. The council hadn't had a bunch of meetings or anything else about parks, but, and, and as organizations, we didn't know exactly what, all we needed, we didn't know exactly how much money was going to be generated, but we all had a need. Ashley Park, we've been playing baseball over there for fifty years, soccer had Midland, softball, I guess, had Alcoa, some of the Boys and Girls Club, uh, was at the school, uh, senior citizens was right down this way, so we all had a need. And so, it was at that time that we presented a signed letter to the board, or to the city council, uh, asking that they allowed it to go on the ballot. I will say this, if my memory serves me right, and I could be wrong, but there was two council members, I was not on the council at that time, it was later, there were two council members that, uh, actually supported that and got out and worked for it. Uh, the mayor, uh, didn't take a position one way or another. Uh, but anyways, it was allowed to go to ballot in like February or March, set for July. And so what we did then, once we realized it was going to go to ballot, then we formed a group called the Bryant People for Parks, and a lot of you may have seen, uh, these green brochures that we, I think we made over household range in Bryant, okay? And, uh, laying out what we wanted to do, and so forth and so on. Uh, but that was done after it was allowed to go to ballot, is when we started formulating what we thought that each group needed, and so forth and so on, was presented to the public. Uh, in this, but the, the precedent being that it didn't go through any committees on city council before they allowed it to go to ballot. It was just a request from the citizens with grassroots support for you folks to allow it to go to the voters. And, uh, I don't remember the vote, but I do know it passed, and then, and then, uh, in July, this was about sixty-something percent passage by the residents. Uh, it was a great deal for the city of Bryant, anybody's been out, or you guys have all been out there, you know how many people enjoy it. Uh, to me, another thing I made it very, very nice, is, uh, we, Metro Plan and U L R studies at the time indicated the majority of the sales tax revenue would be paid without the town shoppers. So, it wasn't the ci- citizens of Bryant got it for fifty cents on the dollar, and actually, that number was closer to sixty at that time, but we just threw the majority in there. Uh, so it's been a, a good deal from that standpoint. Uh, the, uh, we've spent about eighteen million dollars, uh, if I recall correctly, right in that range, and at the end, what ended up happening is we run out of money. And so some of the things didn't get done, soccer fields weren't built over there, baseball cut back from ten to nine, I don't know, everybody's got something they can say about it, so it just didn't get completed. And, uh, so this, this initiative, and I don't think, from the numbers that I've seen so far, uh, our associations anyways, would need six million dollars, I look like it's going to come up today, but you know, there's also some thought, maybe the city needs something, maybe the city wants to add something, um, besides what we've got. But anyway, maybe, maybe there's some, some other needs that the city has, but what we're asking tonight is, is that, uh, you folks, assuming that, and I, we haven't seen the latest draft of the ordinance, we're, we're, you know...
If there is one, I don't know, I don't know.
We'd want to review that, but as long as it's close to what we issued in that letter, obviously, we would support it. But it's a grassroots type effort, and that's what happened before, and the people decided, uh, what they wanted to do. Now, some folks might say it's, you know, we're all, on a short string here, and I guess it is, but from baseball's perspective, it's been going on for two or three years. Uh, and my, my, my answer to that would be, if the thought is to push it off the April or May or June or July or whatever, what for, why? You've got a grassroots support by a broad-based group of people, I haven't heard of any opposition, if there is, I'd like to hear what their complaint, maybe we could be educated a little bit, and, is it me?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Sorry. Uh, but I'm not aware of any opposition to it. Uh, our support for the street part of it is because it's Boone Park related, we don't have a problem with that, but we do think there was a need that the council approved the design, rather than the park, so...
Steve, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we've got this list here, and I realize this is not a complete list, we're looking at a little over two million dollars.
That's for baseball.
Baseball and senior citizens. Well, baseball and senior citizens, and this, we're looking a little over two million dollars. You know, my only heartburn is with, is, we're going to tell people, we want you to give us six million dollars, we don't know exactly where it's going to go, or what it's going to go for, just give it to us and we'll figure it out later. How long would it take, you know, there's some, some things on here for baseball, even, I mean, you know, we need, we need a stadium type situation down there.
Well, I, I think this, uh, councilman, is that that, that will be determined in the, we'll, we'll better define that in the next sixty days, how like we did this, as to what's going to be out there, what would we, we'd be expecting, but, you know, even, e- even before, uh, when we did it, we didn't know how much money would go here or there, uh, split it, you know, which organization got this or that. And our feeling on this was that the pro- we could support the process, that there's six million, give or take, put over here for designated for parks. Our, our thought, and y'all may have another one, but we've got a parks committee that has two representatives from each ward, just as aldermen do, that, that led, those lists would be presented to the parks committee, who would review it and make recommendations, but the council would make the final decision that we're actually going to spend this, or this, or this. It wouldn't be up the, the baseball association that we're going to spend two million dollars.
But, you know, my point is, is this, these types of opportunities come a lot every ten, fifteen years, so we better get it right.
Absolutely, I agree.
We need to take care of what needs to be taken care of, so we're not five years down the road saying, well, which would have done this, and which would have...
Well, the, the, and, and the thing is, if there's six million dollars put over there, the list that I've seen so far, not going to come up to six million dollars, okay? So, you might say, well, let's make it three, let's make it four, I don't know, but at the same time, there would be six million over there that could be spent on parks, you guys would determine of, uh, uh, in the end, how it is spent, which, to me, is the way it should be, I mean, you're elected official, and you also make that final decision on, on how to spend it.
And I don't think Sleepy Village would be that much further to go ahead and connect for a rear entrance, as well.
Right.
So, the six million may cover both.
Well, and I put, actually, on our list, if you notice, I put the Sleepy Hollow on the street side, but obviously, that could come back over on the park side.
Can I, can I speak to that, because that is a street project, that would have to be part of a street, a street fund.
What if it says up to six million?
Well, the street, if you do anything with respect to the streets, it needs to be under the street question, so, the nine mil- the nine million dollars would have to be used for...
Even if it's, even if it's an entrance and exit into, out of the park, it's not a public street.
But it's a street for other things other than just going into Bishop Park, right?
No, it would be a rear exit egress for the park, to get in and out of the park, and it goes onto Sleepy Village, because Sleepy Village is not part of the city, but just what they're saying is, is to improve to get a second egress out of the park, the same as you got with, uh, Ken Palmquist Parkway, you know, that's, that's the city property, it's not a street. It's, it's basically just a driveway, it's a, it's a driveway.
If they can be used for the public, for other things other than the park, it needs to be under the street question, so, that, that's something I don't know that I'm prepared to address and answer by now without some, some further questions.
Even if it's all park property?
Is the street, is that, is that needed publicly?
Well, I, it ends right at Bryant City Limits. And there's twenty acres of Alcoa land, then there's actually the park, and so, I would have to work it out, in fact, I've already contacted them, and, uh, it would be part of the parks by the time we get there.
That, that's an issue that we could address later, necessarily, I agree with Ryan at this point, that until we know for sure how it is, I don't want to go screw up any street money if we don't.
Well, one question for council, though, Ken Palmquist Drive, that wasn't under the street, that's under the park.
I'm sure it was, I mean... I can't, I can't speak to how much money was spent by the city, but, uh...
Oh, okay. They missed that.
It would just be a different name of park.
Okay. Um, any other, but, any other questions, but I, I agree with you, councilman, that anytime you deal with the public's money, uh, it should be accounted for and spent properly, and, and what we're, the, the way we see it from the parks, or from the association's standpoint is this, right now, we have zero. We don't have, other than what, what associations might generate themselves. I'm assuming the city does not have, they can't write a check to fix things out there, I'm making that assumption, I could be wrong, maybe you write a check for it for a million, I, I don't know, I hadn't looked at the financial. But, this is a way for the public to decide, and I might say this, I'll just use this comparison, I don't know if I'm comparing apples to apples, but recently, the city council at Benton, and I believe it was nine to one, I got this out of the newspaper, I think I recall it right, uh, they're going to allow it to go to the voters on a half cent sales tax, that will raise thirty-eight million dollars that they're going to use to build, uh, redo Bernard Holland Park down there. I don't know how many acres they've got at Bernard Holland, but I know this, that if we spend eighteen, and then we spend another six on this, or thereabouts, with this hundred and six acres out there, I can't imagine that Benton could build anything for thirty-eight million that we compare it with, but maybe they can, uh, for what that's worth. We, uh, twenty-five million dollars is a lot of money, eighteen million dollars was a lot of money, it's the biggest project we've ever done in Bryant that I'm aware of, but at the same time, uh, if, if your public is going to have, have things, and I'm, I'll be honest with you, and it's the, our, our deal, and I believe, we didn't state it in here, but it's still going to be a sunset tax, it's still in there.
The half cent, that's correct, that's correct.
Uh, I'm, I'm more for cutting taxes than I'm raising, but there's certain things that, uh, that you're going to get, you're going to have to, you're going to have to do it that way.
Well, I do also know, as liaison for the council to the Parks Commission, know that here recently, with several of the meetings that I've attended, that, you know, they're trying to come up with a way to do the, the jogging and walking trail around the park that was called for, and the tax, if there's not money there, that I know very, Brandon and I were working for grants, you know, very aggressively, um, you know, to get those, those things down and get them surfaced, uh, you know, I know that we don't have any pavilions or anything out there, I don't know if, if, if the, the baseball, or the Boys and Girls Club, or the soccers, or anything even, call for that type of, but those are things that are needed for the general public as well.
Playground.
And playgrounds, you know, for the general public, so...
My concern is, is that, the reason I ask for a specific, I don't really close numbers, is, let's say we do six feet in the parks, nine feet in the roads, and all of a sudden, the road needs eight feet, and the park being set, you definitely...
You do the six million, you stop and you pay the bottom up early on that.
You've got a million on roads, you're going to just use pay off the old bond, you will, and you're short on parks, so that's why I'm saying.
You need to study.
You, you need, you need to know kind of what the numbers are for sure, so you can at least get close.
Steve, what kind of economic development would come from this, if we could have, like, regional tournaments?
Well, from a baseball standpoint.
If we can't have them now, like, what I'm.
Well, I'll give you an example, uh, I'll speak to baseball, and, and if any of the other folks want to speak to certain, certain things, uh, but when we started this several years ago, one of the things we talked about in baseball, and we talked about the community, was being able to host a World Series, and, uh, we had some things we had to do at the ball, at, at the Bryant Athletic Association, in order to qualify for that, we had to hold certain regionals and this and that, we've met all of those requirements. Uh, we've been told that we can have a World Series, but to do that, the park has to measure up, and it won't do that right now, Michael, I have my present can speak to that, uh, we could not host a World Series today if we want, even though we're qualified to do it through our program, but we're not from a facility standpoint. How big a deal that would be?
The things that you're proposing that we would do, or the things we would have to make.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Two to three full bunch.
Absolutely. Now, what kind of economic impact that, that would have? I, I know that there are cities in this state, I guess Russellville, Van Buren, Fort Smith, maybe Monticello, they've actually helped World Series already, uh, and, uh, I think it's, Michael, how much is it just the bit of?
Uh, you can put fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, which, you know, the program would have to do, just to get it, and then, of course, it's a big community effort, when you bring, do a World Series. A matter of fact, I guess from a baseball standpoint, like I bragged on that a little bit, since we started this, we won two World Series, and I've been to, how many more, Michael?
One every year for the last ten years, or something like that.
So, we're making some progress.
Have, y'all got a committee, I know that y'all talk through programs, but are y'all thinking about putting a committee together to come to the parks and work with them?
Absolutely.
I, I'm kind of with Mike that, you know, to have a plan, and actually say, this is what we're going to do, so we don't end up in the same situation that we are from this parks the first time, where we didn't finish it completely because we spent money in other areas, if we have a really good laid-out plan, we cannot get ourselves into that bind again that we're sitting here today with.
I think it's extremely important that if we can get it on the ballot, that we do something along these lines, which would be a combination of, there again, a grassroots effort of, of the, our associations that are interested out there, the parks, the council members, whoever would get in call, so that when we go to the public, we say that this is how it's going to be spent, and, uh, we can, we can, we can get to that.
And maybe we all set some standards too, when these projects will be done, so we can stay on an agenda this time, and not have the same problem we have now.
The, uh, in fairness to our, our group of organizations, uh, even though we were asked back in June, I don't know if anybody else would ask for not, and with the conflicts we had with everything, it's been kind of hard for us to come up with a number in five or six days. And, and, and you know, the, if there's an argument that you push it off, uh, again, my question would be why? I mean, you've got support today, you've, in a, in a, in a deal like this, and, and some of you have been through, uh, initiatives before, support's huge. I mean, there's communities that would, they would love to have a broad-based support.
I think most of us have a problem with asking the public for obligation, where we don't know where we're already at, and, and what, what, what it's all going to consist of. Uh, once we can get a bill for that, you know, like the street, we want to know that we've got a plan, it's hard for us to go to the public and say, we want twenty million dollars, we won't be able to tell you what we're going to do with that, where we're going to do. We're, we're not there yet, that's the problem.
Chris, if we went to the primary in May, would we still have to pay special election fees for a primary to add on to that ballot?
I don't believe so, I didn't get a chance to look at the statute on that specifically today, which, um, I think it's, I can't remember what the statute says, for general elections or we include a primary, I can't remember.
I'm not sure if you do have to pay anything, if you have it at the same time with the primary, I can tell you it'd be a great to reduce cost to the city, to have it at the date that another election point would be held, so that's something that's certainly a concern.
That would probably benefit, but then we can have plenty of time to get things together and get all the costs to put it on the ballot.
Well, there may be some cost, it just, it wouldn't be, you're, you wouldn't be putting the entire bill, I, I don't think, I'd have to look at the statute, because it seems like it says something about general elections, and I don't remember if it says on primary election.
Would you look into that for us?
My take on that, uh, council members, is this, all we're asking you to do is let it go on the ballot. If we don't make the right presentation to the public, they're not going to pass it, it's going to lose. With the broad-based support that we have, I don't think that's going to happen, I think it's going to pass. But, uh, all we're asking is give it a shot on the ballot. Now, all these numbers that need to be hammered out, this and that, before you present it, absolutely, if you give them a bunch of bogus stuff, they're going to vote it down. But you know, we've been waiting, not all, well, we've been waiting three years, you know, didn't like we've been waiting a week.
Jesse.
Sure.
Thanks for all the work you've done, committees, getting everybody together on all this, and I think, you know, I understand your passion about this, as we all are, to get things right, um, you know, the, the key that I think with this, and I know you guys can express this in some other ways, what I don't want to happen is for there to be a six-million-dollar glob of funds, and it's not just crystal, as clear as light washes on the summertime, exactly wherever dollars want to go, similar to the road, when we get to that part of the discussion tonight, I want to see the design for the road, I want to know the width of the road, I want to know if any actual concrete is going to be involved, I want to know every single detail, and I want to hold people's speech to the fire to make sure it's exactly what we said to do it before it goes on the ballot. And I feel strongly about these things too, and if, and if there's some way that within this ordinance and the ballot measuring, that we can ensure that that happens, post-election or post-voting on this, I'm, I was going for it in November, but if not, I'm not, because I think we're down to the punch list on the park, we're down to the, the finishing it up stuff, and I think I want to know exactly what's going to be done before we approve it.
Well, the, the thing is, of course, that came up in, in our conversation, in our meetings over there, we didn't want to support something, give a carte blanche to somebody over there, and let them spend it however they want to. That's why, in the letter that I read into the record, it said, "We support the process." Where the itemized list, it presented the park, so forth and so on, uh, "We support the process where the council approves the design and the disbursements."
And if I might add to that, when I was thinking through the logic of how we could do this, if council votes to approve the ballot initiative this evening, then that sets a deadline for us to get things done, um, and for people to get to choose, then what I would anticipate is council having a resolution that lays out those various specific things, saying, "This is what we're going to do," and that's something that one holds the council and the city accountable to the public, and the public can look at it and say, okay, here's the list of things. You know, it is a time crunch, but it's one of those things, when you have momentum going, um, if the associations are on board, and, and this momentum, it's one of those of seize the momentum and keep it going, because, I mean, I think we have an opportunity to do good things, yeah, there's some work we have to do between now and then, but it sounds like everybody's on board with doing that, and we can pass the resolution, you know, pretty much any time, that's an easy vote, it's not as structured as an ordinance, so that we can basically say, this is what we're going to do with this money, this is the plan we approve up for Boom Road. Um, but the first thing is, is before we start spending a lot of money investing, and doing those designs and those plans, we need to know that we're at least going to have the election, I, I think, is, is, you know, if you're looking at it from the professional side of it, because that's, that's time and money to start doing that, you know.
So from a, from a, from a, from a street perspective, this from our.
You want them to speak?
No, what, uh, yeah, you have a minute, Steve, I'm sorry, next question's going to, um, I think, I think we've been great working on this so far, and I think with, with further effort, and, and, uh, is, is there anything common that all the groups have shared with each other?
Parking, light?
Parking lights. Electrical, electric service, that's one of the common things I've heard.
Did they, did they mention maintenance of, of existing facilities?
Yes, we did, as a matter of fact, the, the, the ball-playing end of it all seemed to have a similar problem.
What, can you share a few of them?
Yeah, the fields are rural.
You mean the rocks?
There's plenty of those.
What about the sprinkler guys getting ran over?
Somebody else can speak to that, but yes.
What about, what about, what about?
I mean, all of those things, the, uh, and it was our understanding, when we, and that's why we read the one-eighth cent sales tax into the record tonight, when we supported the one-eighth cent sales tax before, and what we told the public was the one-eighth cent sales tax will be used for the operation and maintenance cost of all Bryant, all Bryant parks, operation and maintenance, and I, I'm assuming that's the way it's being spent, if it is, I guess we've got to have more money, because we're not keeping them up.
I, I, I don't think I've ever seen a report of the way that one-eighth cent sales tax has been expended during this time period, have any of you?
I believe we've asked for it.
Huh?
I believe we've asked for it.
I think. And I know specifically, I mean, I've got a copy of the ordinance as it was passed in oh-six, and maybe.
I just, that, that, that's.
But to answer y'all's concerns, uh, and I, I'm going to turn to the people on our, is there any, Suzanne and everybody, is there any reason why, oh, if we can get it on the ballot, that over the next, over the course of the next couple of weeks, that we can refine those numbers pretty, pretty close?
We can definitely.
We can definitely do it, I've got, I've got at least two million coming from the software, but that I just haven't given to you, so, just a minute.
There's, uh, but we can get, we can refine it, yeah.
Well, then at an hour's meeting or so the other night, we accomplished a lot, working together as a group.
Well, I think a lot of this is going to tie in together, because like they said, baseball and softball, I'm just speaking on that part of it, are covered, the things, the three main things we're asking for, they want it to match, parks want it to match, they want to do that, so they're going to be tied together, um, they're going to get better, you know, everything's going to match, and everything's going to look the same, so everything's uniform.
To answer your question, Councilman, I, I, I believe that when we get ready to present it, from the park standpoint, now, I don't know about the street, but from the park standpoint, that we'll be able to present a, a package to the public that says, this is the way it needs to be.
Well, and I want to speak to everybody to realize, to me, that park down there is the single most, the most important, like, as far as people in this, in this city, if you don't wait to drive down there in the afternoon and see how many people are down there, how many people are using that facility, so my concern is, I want to get it right. I want, I want the plan service right, I don't, you know, uh, we need, we need, we need all this stuff, so.
We don't want to spend six million, come up three million short. I, I think we're okay on the, on the six, but we, we would, we would commit to refine our numbers and.
Well, and also on the road issues, we, we need a set of numbers here, we've got some really pretty plans and all, but I believe that what we hear from most of the people in our boards, that's not what they want, you know, they want, they want something more practical, uh, and we need to try to get another scenario of some funds of what it's going to cost to do the necessary fixes, uh, and I don't know how quick we can get those numbers.
That's a good question.
You want me to sit down? Sit down, yeah. No.
Yeah, I got some questions to do. Thank you very much.
I'm available.
Thank you.
My name's Todd. How are you?
Todd, how, what would the cost difference be between the Mercedes-Benz plan that was solid, lovely, run it out, if I buy one, for a three-lane road that's curb and gutter?
Well, since the, the meeting, we have gone back and done some cost estimates.
Why three lanes?
Turn lane, I'm sorry. I didn't want to put three lanes. And so.
Yeah, the original, the original boom road improvements that we discussed at the public meetings that we had, were a planning cost, probable planning cost of fourteen point nine million dollars, which included the Mercedes-Benz type thing that you're referring to. We went back and did a, just a three-lane curb and gutter, um, and those, if we do the entire boom road improvements from, uh, all the way down at Reynolds Road, all the way to Mount Carmel Road, then that still is an eleven-million-dollar cost.
Does it have sidewalk?
It does not, the sidewalk costs.
One, one sidewalk, is that?
You said it didn't.
Well, the, the sidewalk cost is, is pretty honestly insignificant when you're dealing with the drainage, because, one, it doesn't cause additional right-of-way impacts, because your drainage structures and your pipes and stuff are right outside your curb and gutter, and if we do the sidewalk just on top of that, you know, just off the curb without the green space. You're really only about, I think it's a hundred thousand dollars per mile per side, so it's pretty low cost. It's really the drainage curb and gutter, the paving, that are high cost.
Well, that's not counting, just eleven millions?
What does eleven mean?
Eleven million is just the three lanes on the entire quarter.
So that's not, that's not two lanes, we're just curb, I mean, the curb and gutter with one sidewalk, we're turn lanes only where we need them.
No, that's not.
That's three lanes all the way.
Yes, sir. That's not what we want, that's not what we want.
Are, are we going to have to move the utilities once again, or are utilities going to be able to stay where they've been placed now?
Uh, I think with, with the three lane, and if we do, if we end up going with something like a two lane, I've, I've not been asked at this point to, to do that, is why we don't have any.
Who, who asked you, who asked you, gave you the criteria?
Uh, Mary Adams.
Is, is that also like this, the bridge, is it, are we going to replace the bridge, or are we going to have to use?
Yeah, that, that, that replaces the bridge, um, now, actually, the bridge is there, can say, but it will have to be widened, and the road around it will have to be raised, so that's, that's the additional cost there.
Is the, uh, the three lanes all the way down, if we saw the walk, just three lanes, that's about three hundred thousand dollars, just, because that's about three miles, um, would that be within existing railways?
That would be mostly within existing railways. I, I can't tell you until we do a design, if it's within existing railways, I don't have survey plans and things like that, the existing right-of-way is fifty to sixty feet, so that, sixty feet, so that improvement would stay within fifty to sixty feet. So that improvement is only thirty-five feet wide, so depending upon how much we had to raise it in the area of the park, most of that would likely stay within the right-of-way.
Specifically the areas that are more residential now, that aren't, aren't so-and-so flood prone, flood prone, they would be less likely to be impacted.
Right, I would expect so, there are some structures that, that cross the road that may need to be upsized, and things like that, in areas we may have to raise the road a little bit, so, but I would expect that all that would be, you know, within the right-of-way.
What about just the two lanes, like what most people want, is the two-lane road, one single sidewalk, curb and gutter, and fix our drainage problems, and we get some numbers on that?
And the turn lane at high-traffic.
Yeah, and it's probably what, three, you think?
And then you're not going to have three lanes.
Reynolds Road and the park.
And three lanes all the way across in front of the park, only.
I got the tape there already.
Right, but with most of the road where the property owners and stuff are being disturbed, two lanes, so we, I mean, obviously we need more.
What, what, what would the cost be to figure that out, and can you give us a rough estimate of what it would cost to go from one eighty-three down to Mount Carmel Road, for that type of construction, just an estimate of what it would cost to get that?
I mean, we've been doing planning costs for these little facilities, uh.
When we spent so far, do you know that?
I think around twelve thousand dollars.
I think we have enough room in the budget to do one more. We just need to get it right.
That's what I just.
We just hope by six of them, that way we know, you know, where we're going.
We need to, keep in mind, we need to abide by our own ordinances, okay, that we've already passed, so. We need to, keep in mind, we need to abide by our own ordinances, okay, that we've already passed, so y'all need a copy of this and look at this. Now, there's some flexibility in here, and we worked it that way on purpose, but we need to, sidewalks, bike lanes, those kind of things, this is, we, we need to, we need to keep those things in there because that's what our ordinance says.
You mean only with one sidewalk, or it'll be two?
You can do, you can, you can change it and do whatever you want to, I mean, like, for example, the eleven foot lanes, you don't have to build four lanes like this costs for you, the city can determine that part of, so if we want to build two eleven foot lanes, we can do that. If we want to put the sidewalk back at curve like he's talking about, that doesn't cost very much to do that. What, and I want you to get the impression that we're gonna spend, we can't spend three hundred thousand dollars worth of designing to design a project that's gonna be voted only in November, you know, we, we've got to get the concept down first. We've got to understand, we understand what you're asking for, and I think we've got money in the budget to do this one more time to get the, the street skate as accurate as we can, but we can't tell you that we're gonna be two, two inches over on this guy's property, we can't tell you those things just yet.
But in all fairness, the council has to be involved, and we weren't involved in any of the design work.
We were not.
It was unveiled at the.
And then we had to listen to a public calling us and complaining where our hands were tied.
So we saved twelve thousand dollars, how much of it went to the first lane and how much of it can you figure right now?
The stuff that we did after the public meetings? No, I mean, the stuff we did was probably another thousand or so, I mean, that's, that's where we're at today, and I guess I, I should say, I mean, we have not done any design. You know, this is all planning information for y'all to make a decision, you know, to give y'all the information that y'all need to make a decision.
I think we need some figures on the bare bones, I think we need the basic, we already got the Cadillacs, let's get the bare bones, the sidewalk to be right by the curb and gutter where it minimizes any exposure of taking anybody's property from what's already there, the right of way that's already there.
We need to go on a street committee or something for people to have a think of.
I agree.
I need to.
I mean, have, have we got that G and study back for the flood study? I was told that one resident was told we'd have it by the end of the month, and I haven't seen anything on it.
The engineers, Garber has been working with F T N on that, we have the numbers, the numbers that we needed to design the bridge around and the opening under the bridge specifically, we have those numbers, yes.
Okay.
But the final report has not been delivered to us, but we do know the numbers, that's what we need to know.
And if, we talked about the, is it sleepy hollow or whatever it was?
Sleepy hollow, it's.
That could affect the, the traffic on Boone tremendously if we open that up to the park, because a lot of people coming from Benton area and other areas, they're coming down that road, they would cut through there and impact the road less, so that would be.
That's not very much roadway to make that connection.
So is that in there, is, do we need to ask for that to be in the?
I don't think it is.
I, I think we're at the point, and again, I, I don't want to speak for everybody here, where we've got to a committee or somebody, whether it's a mixture of council people, public works, planning commission, whatever it is, to, to sit down and discuss this and take it to the citizens and ask them for their input.
What is the street committee?
And not just throw something out there on paper and tell the citizens, this is what we're gonna do, like we have in the past.
I agree.
We've got to represent the citizens, Brian.
We, we've got proposed plans for street committee, but that won't come up to our next council meeting, is that correct?
There's gonna be a workshop on it.
That, that also wouldn't affect the city.
What is that, this one?
No, that's the focus she has, is some new streets, old, Boone Road's been there for a hundred years, and so that, that committee that she's talking about would not cover that.
Unless it was reworded, to take a new, new project, new street project, whatever, I mean. I, I think that we do have some work to do.
Let me, can I ask, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, listen, Sid, I got a question for you. Do we agree that Boone Road needs improvement?
Yes.
Nobody disagrees with that?
No.
The question, the question, the question is, is how much improvement are we wanting to do, whether it's a two lane, for a three lane, with a turn lane to places, because that's what I'm hearing, am I just kind of correct?
I, I think, I think that this whole county, this whole council, I don't know if you need a big committee to do it, everybody says we want two lanes with a turn lane at three intersections.
And, and we.
That's pretty simple. We make that decision, so you don't have to hash it out for five years to figure that out.
And, and if I'm, if I'm not, Mr. Chandler, we agree that we have an ordinance in place to establish certain street specifications that we have to meet, so we agree that we have to meet our ordinance related to our street standards.
Or change it.
Or change it.
Create an overlay district for the area.
The only problem with changing it is you're gonna hamper yourself on potential drainage applications down the road, because that's.
Create overlay just like on.
Does the downtown area, do you want overlay, we could zone however you want to.
I don't know that, potential. The, the thing is, in this, in standards, well, do we agree that we want sidewalks?
Yes.
Yes.
We agree that we want, we want the drainage, we agree we want sidewalk, sidewalks, multi-use path.
The final, the final plan will be approved right here. That, that's where the final plan will be approved by all of us.
Yeah.
What we're trying to understand right now is, number one, do you want street, do you want park improvements? Yes, everybody kind of agrees with that. Do you want street improvements? Yes. This is the way the ordinance is written, we don't have to spend it all on Boone Road, if there's, if, if we spend four million dollars and do what we need to do on Boone Road, that just leaves some more money that we can do some more improvements around the city, am I correct? That's the way the ordinance is written. It's not just related to this, so it's, it's the concept. All we need to know is do you guys want to make, do you want to put on the ballot?
I think we're gonna make nine million dollars if cuts.
From eleven, whatever.
Well, there, you know, there's also the potential for the road to not go all the way down.
No.
It's gonna be difficult.
It means us not to do it.
What, what would be the big, uh, decision of my money, but I'm honest with you, if we added another two million dollars to make that, that impression to the proposal?
What would that, what would you question?
If the bond issue, instead of the place, it's six and nine.
Sixty nine.
Eleven and six.
I don't know.
How much money?
I can't do it.
I think we need to think.
I mean, you have the other riders on that, what's?
I think we need to think.
All, whoever.
I think we need to think ahead a little bit. Reynolds Road is four lane, Alcoa is sixty five, Boone Road is gonna be in order between in the future, three lanes really gonna be in, I, I think we just don't need to look right in front of us, but look down the road a little bit, because you know that's gonna develop astronomically whenever that road is put in. I don't think, I agree with you, Glenn, and the whole council agrees, parks need to be finished, but I, I, I think we need to think ahead and, and really do this up the right way, and I have to go back and patch it.
And the street fund is gonna be getting new monies with the new sales tax state law, we're gonna be getting, what, six hundred thousand a year, three hundred thousand a year?
Two hundred.
But somewhere between two hundred and three hundred thousand dollars a year, but that's, that, that doesn't have anything to do with this bond.
That's right.
I didn't say it has anything to do with the bond, but we're gonna be getting new street money to take care of other items in the city that we could deal with or add it on to this project if we needed to, but this project would be four years down the road.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be added to the budget wherever we so choose to put, if you ask, if you want to put it in overlays, we can do that, if you want to put it toward, um, something added to this project, and have maybe the bonds, the bonds are very specific, you can do that. The other thing that you talked about too was thinking ahead. The right away is one of the things that we would need to look at very carefully. We can always add another lane later on down the road if we have a right. You can add lanes, but, but you need to, you need to buy the right of ways up front, if you're gonna do that.
Do we currently have fifty foot right of way?
We have sixty feet right of ways from what we've been able to tell on Boone Road, we have sixty foot right of way on Boone Road, that's thirty foot from center, existing center line.
Currently owned, but we can work with them.
Yes.
And can you do three lanes with sidewalk within that sixty?
Um, we can do it in fifty seven feet.
Yeah, with the three lane, you know, we can do that, that section.
That's with the sidewalk.
With the sidewalk.
And that's with, uh, the three lanes, it's fifty seven feet.
But that sixty foot, does that also include the utilities, the sewer, the water, the gas, the electric?
Some of the utilities are within that sixty feet, most of them are, except for, I'm not sure about the power, they have their own right of way there, I think.
Because I don't want to sit here and say we've got sixty foot of right of way and then we gotta add another ten or fifteen because of the utility right of way.
Water lines, water lines can be put back of curve within that sixty feet, we can put, we can find a place to put the water line, sewer line's not gonna change, the sewer line we're gonna have to move it, no line. But the, the water lines, we will need to move, but we can put those anywhere. Water's forceless, I mean, it's pressure, so we move it, yeah.
I would like to hear from other people in the audience that may have some comments on parks and roads as well.
Do we have some people here that would like to speak on the road? Could we hear from some of those people?
Chris, is it appropriate to do that now or during a couple of comments?
He did, I was part of the workshop.
Okay, just come up, come up one at a time and speak into the microphone and state your name and address, please.
I'm Rita Harrow, I live in Richardson Place. I've attended the public meetings on the Boone Road expansion. I've kind of revised my thoughts since I've heard the committee speaking tonight because, or the council, because I see a lot of my thoughts echoed here. However, I, I'm not part of any organization, I have no grassroots support, which I did, but I would like to speak on behalf of an ordinary voter in this town who has property that will be directly affected. We do, I think, deserve the right to be listened to, and we had a lot of opposition to this when these meetings were held. We want Boone Road improved, but we'd like to do it in a prudent manner. I might point out that Arkansas has the second largest sales tax in the nation. I think that any increase or any burden that is put on the taxpayers should be taken very seriously. I hear a lot of large numbers bandied around here, it's almost overwhelming, but we need to spend that money wisely. The voters are not going to accept, in my opinion, they're not gonna accept an open ended thing on this ballot where the concept is still just thrown out there, or, well, they'll figure this out later after we get the money. That's, that's just a red flag for a lot of voters. I also think that many of our voters in this town, particularly those on the other side of the highway, don't really care very much about Boone Road, they're not gonna necessarily vote for this, they care about Spring Hill Road. I have, usually live over there, I know that for a fact. So my, in summary, I would just say, please think carefully before you put an open ended thing on this ballot. Let's take exactly to a voter what you are going to have sent to pay for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Ask me again?
Yes, sir.
Speak to streets just a second, I want to clarify something. If the ordinance reads that the money can be spent somewhere besides Boone Road, our organizations are not supporting that. What we're supporting on the streets would be the Sleepy Village and Boone Road improved, not money spent somewhere else. Now, would we? I don't know, we'd have to go back, but I can tell you, we're prepared tonight to support just what we put in the left, and, uh, I think we would, I think it should be, obviously it needs to be accounted for, but we, our process will leave it to the wisdom of the council on how to come up those numbers on the street side. But money had mentioned that the ordinance said something about the streets somewhere else, but we're not prepared to support that.
His ordinance, you do have to put in his ordinance how much you're gonna dedicate to the streets and how much you would dedicate to the parks.
Yeah.
So you would have to do that in this.
But can't you identify the Boone Road?
You don't have to identify the streets, but you've got to identify the amount.
The, the ordinance is drafted in such a way that it does exactly for the streets what it does for parks, and that is, it's not tied down to any specific projects, and with all due respect to Mr. Glenn and his groups, the city council is my client, and the many meetings that I've attended, it's been my direction from you as a council to draft the street question very open ended, such that to the extent you don't need all the money for Boone Road, you could use it on other streets in the city. To the extent you would like me to change that language, I would be more than happy to do that, but the ordinance that is put before you tonight, it would need to be adopted in this fashion tonight for us to make a note of the ballot, does not specifically list Boone Road as a one and only project. Now, certainly you could, uh, by resolution do similar what you would be doing for parks, and that is, in a separate resolution between now and number twelve, you could identify, yes, it's going to be for Boone Road X Y, but as the ordinance is drafted tonight, it is open ended with a lot of musical things other than just Boone Road.
And I think you just put that away because we could apply for other types of money, possibly through Metro Plan or other avenues that could be possibly put onto this project, and we might not need X amount of dollars on X street, so therefore we wanted to leave it open so we could spend it other places.
Two things, does the ordinance say not identify Bishop and Midway?
X and Y.
Well, we would support that either, we're not supporting money to be spent in parks all over town.
That would be, that would be, that would be part of the resolution that would pass also.
Okay, well, I guess we need to see that, but on the streets end of it, uh, there again, I guess you could make Boone longer, but the reason we're supporting Boone Road and Sleepy Village has to do with Bishop Park. Bishop Park has gone a long way in creating the traffic problem on, on Boone, and one of the reasons we opposed it early on was that on the street deal, it could be spent all over town, and we're saying, let's address Bishop Park, get it done, fix the park, fix the street, and then see where you go, but I want to make it clear that our organization, and it's clear in the letter, we don't, we don't support streets other than Boone Road or Sleepy Village.
Yeah, and, and as everybody should realize, Boone Road would, would be primary, anything other than rest of the land was completed as a side.
We would, uh, I guess there could be some wording put together identifying, you know, we, we, we're, we're okay with the council making the decision, okay, so I would have to go back to our people, but I think that, that, that in the council's wisdom, if they decided that Boone Road first and gets that finished and there was some money left over, that, you know, we'd word it something like that.
Yeah, if, yeah, if there was money left over, Brian, get correct me, or who, money left over, either has to be spent on roads or used to pay out debt.
Yeah, that's correct, that's correct.
I've got a question for you.
I just, I just want, I just want to make sure we clarified on what we were supporting, so I think.
I've got a question on the line, Paul, I'm gonna tell him, is it possible to, would you let me ask, is it possible to refund a portion of the old bond and use the proceeds to, uh, for parks? Do we have to refund the entire old bond debt to get the additional proceeds?
You have to refund the entire issue because, keep in mind that there is a half cent that is currently closed to that bond issue, and that half cent can only be used to pay debt service on the two thousand six, two thousand seven bond, so what you're doing is you're, you're terminating the existing half cent tax that was voted in two thousand six, and you're levying a new half cent tax that can only be used for debt service on the bond issue for parks and streets and the refunding, and so, short of adding a new tax to the voters, you have to refund all of two thousand six, two thousand seven to terminate that existing tax.
That raises up a question, you know, if you're gonna have, if we knew this, you're gonna have two questions on the ballot.
Oh, you're gonna have more than that.
Well, you're basically gonna have streets, parks, two different questions.
And, and refunding two thousand six and two thousand seven, and voting.
So what happens if parks passes and the street fails?
Then you would do the street, whichever project passed, whatever you said in your example.
You'd refund that for.
You'd refund, you'd refund two thousand six, two thousand seven, and you would issue bonds for either parks or streets, whichever one.
So, Brian, you're suggesting that we separate bond issues?
Yeah, the, the, and, and let me, let me, let me mention one thing, the key, the key question is the refunding. If voters say, no, we don't want to refund the bonds, but we want the parks and streets, well, you can't accomplish what you want, because you've got to refund those bonds, back to your question, it's wrote out, you've got to refund those bonds to get rid of that existing half cent tax.
So if all four don't pass, the whole thing's been, been the one.
If, if the refunding only passes, let's say that, refunding only passes, then you as a council would decide whether it's to your benefit to refund the two thousand six, two thousand seven bonds. If the refunding, if the refunding. If the refunding, if the refunding and one of parks or streets pass, then you would do a bond issue for the refunding in the parks or the streets, whichever one would pass. And that's, of course, separate from the question of, uh, back to Mr. Chandler's question, with respect to how many ballot questions there are, that the additional question is the rededication of that one eight percent tax to allow it to be placed to this new bond issue, and then on top of that, you've got the fire question. So potentially you've got five questions if you were to do all of this at the November twelfth ballot.
It's gonna be a hard sell.
And I will say, keep in mind that, I know there's been a lot of discussion about a resolution that might be adopted in the coming weeks before the election. Um, and that's certainly something that you as a council can contemplate, and I would highly recommend that you do that. But once you lock in those maximum principal amounts, nine and six, there is no change in that. So if you got a street project that came back and said, well, we need ten for that, well, you've only got nine million dollars for that. Or if you had more for parks than six, or less than six for parks, you were, you were locked in to those dollar amounts. So regardless of the project you might choose, you are stuck with the maximum principal amounts that would be in the ordinance tonight.
One other question, I'll answer that. We're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen million dollars on this bond issue, if we're fine. We also had the two hundred and thirty-something thousand, fifty thousand a year coming in, which could be bonded for an additional two million dollars.
It could be bonded, I won't speak to how much, that's not, it's not a legal question, but yes, but yes.
Approximately two million, so, so.
Yes, you could, you could bond that, that would be an additional question on the ballot, um, and that would raise an additional two million, whatever the figure would be for additional street improvements.
Mike, that, Chandler, that's something that you could address. If we do the, if we do the ballot initiative and we set the numbers, we go forward with it, and then we get the actual numbers on what the street project is, and we can find additional financing or money for it, then that's something we can address as we're moving forward. So, and the issue tonight is, is do you wanna have an election to let the people vote on whether or not to refinance, do the parks, and do the streets? That's the issue y'all are facing.
And I, I do wanna add that if, say, nine million for streets, and let's say you need ten for Boom Road. I agree with Mr. Madison that you could ask the voters to issue, you know, to authorize the city issue additional two million to your by the state half cent sales tax. Uh, but then to the extent, the voters could say another taxes, uh, and if they said no, and you told the voters, hey, we're gonna do this, this project, only have nine million dollars, the cost is ten and a half, and the city owe that exists, it's kind of a factor, maybe a half in that example to finish, complete Boom Road.
We have some other public comments on the road issue.
Hi, listen, uh, my name is Richard. My name is Richard Hollis, and I've lived on Boom Road for twenty years. And, uh, I'd like to associate myself with the comments from the lady that lives in Richardson Place. Uh, she spoke very eloquently about the situation. And, uh, I'd also like to say that thirty days ago, I don't think any of us knew about this proposal.